Therefore, I want to speak to many ongoing misstatements made to Burian City Council over the last several months. The first one is NuAC is only for a few North High Line residents. NuAC is part of a King County ordinance that established five communities in unincorporated King County in order for residents to have a say in how King County governed them. NuAC is one of those organizations. I'm not quite sure of when the process was started. I think in the early 2000s. So that was a misperception that has been said over and over again, which is very clear. Secondly, Burian is putting out false statements to hide actual budget needs. The documents that have been presented over the past, as long as I can remember, probably since 2003 or '04 certainly looked at different aspects of annexation. The ones that seem to be quoted are those that North High Line asked to be incorporated as a standalone city. The documents say very clearly that North High Line didn't have a strong revenue base to be able to support an independent city. So I want to make sure that that's understood by those who are making these statements that are inaccurate. Early reports demonstrate that, I guess I'm saying the same thing again, early reports demonstrate annexation is infeasible. The point I want to make here is a boundary review board put together a very detailed analysis of whether they should approve or disapprove of the proposed annexation. For some of us to read that it speaks to the legitimacy of the work that has been done by both Burian and its consultants to provide accurate and carefully thought-through information. The fourth point that's been brought up numerous times is 2000 businesses and residents signed a petition against annexation. That petition was probably circulated in what I can remember being maybe 2006. So we're looking at a petition that was at least six years old, if not longer. The people that circulated the petition were vehemently opposed to annexation. And when it was looked at carefully, the petition did not accurately represent the proposed annexation at the time. The signatures were coerced, and I use that word very carefully, with the information that was not accurate. The fact that fire, water, and sewer will remain the same, that's not assured. The studies that the city has been doing for the past several years say that they could stay the same, but each entity will have to enter into a dilemma of understanding in order to move forward. I support annexation because it brings two diverse communities together. They've been separated long enough. I think we need to move forward. Burian will have a much more efficient and transparent governing structure than King County, or possibly Seattle. Police services are already in place through the King County contract. Officers move seamlessly between King County, North High Line, and the city of Burian and the city of Sea-Tac. They provide services, they know their community, they know who they're looking for, who they're there to help. So I would not want that to not continue. The thing that really impresses me more than anything else is Burian is in the midst of change. A community that's objecting to annexation has not seen change as a welcome attribute to our community. I think change is a good part of Burian's future. I'm pleased to be a part of this very dynamic and thriving community. I would like the annexation to go forth in August, but if it's the will of this council, I will be happy to see it on the November ballot. I've been fairly silent about annexation, but the misinformation that's out in the community has gotten to the point where it needed to be corrected on camera and in the record. Thank you very much.
I believe there's a motion on the table to change the resolution a little bit before we actually debate the resolution.
I think it's up to the council.
Well, I'd like to speak briefly on the proposed change on the election date, and then I'd like to speak in all length on the ordinance and resolution.
Okay, go ahead and speak to the date, Senator.
Okay, I've heard a lot of information, people saying that they believe that a general election would be much better, would get a bigger turnout. I've done a fair amount of reading on this over the past month or so. While more people show up to vote at a general election, many of those people show up to vote for just the headline election. They vote for president, maybe governor. In this upcoming general election, there's going to be a very bitter initiative on the ballot, at least one. The annexation will be very far down ballot on the back of the page. It's highly likely that most of the people that are eligible to vote will get their ballot and not even reach the annexation issue. And the debate over the annexation would get drowned out in the promises to be extraordinarily bitter elections for president and mayor and over the marriage equality initiative. The conclusion I've come to is that it really doesn't make too much difference which election it's on. In August, it'll get more attention, people that vote will have a chance to be more informed. It's possible that more people would be voting in November, but it's possible that actually fewer people would be voting in November. Some of the reading has indicated that as few as a third of the people vote on everything on the ballot, and as, in some cases, more than a third vote for just the marquee race and skip the rest of the ballot. So I'm okay with whatever date we set it for, but on the motion to change the date, I'll vote no.
Shall we vote on the amendment to...
Uh, Councilmember Robison. Thank you. I'd like to speak to the amendment. I want to thank Mayor Bennett for introducing it. Although I feel strongly that financially, annexation of Area Y would put Burian at a financial detriment and a hardship, I do believe that offering voters, the most voters, the opportunity to participate in their government process is the right attribute. So I support shifting it from August to November. Thank you.
Okay, so are we prepared to vote on the amendment? I'll wait to change the date. So please register your votes then.
Motion passes six to one. opposed, Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. So we're back to the main motion that includes the November date now. Is there any further discussion to be made?
Yeah.
Councilmember Robinson, you may take your case.
Okay, I've been studying this issue for many years, since the mid-'90s. My initial position on it was that North High Line should annex as its own city, but it very quickly became obvious that that just wasn't physically practical because of startup costs, not because of inability to fund the ongoing operation of the city, but because of the startup costs of putting a city together, especially when you have a city of Burian which already has functioning government and has gotten past those initial bumps. A major part of my initial reluctance was getting involved in the kind of nasty fighting that I saw going on in the city of Burian, which has not really improved any over the last few years. We get a small handful of people throwing out a lot of disinformation and throwing the city in controversy that shouldn't be there at all. North High Line is part of Burian. The reason it wasn't part of the annexation when Burian annexed is because in the previous annexation effort, people in that area voted against, or previous incorporation effort, when a much larger city of High Line was proposed, people in the North High Line area voted against incorporation. A smaller area was selected as a way to get started, create a city, and then build from there. The city has already expanded once to the south, it's already expanded once to the north, and this would finish the expansion to what would have been the original area of the city. As far as the specific information that's been raised, I can address the UAC. I was part of a very large committee of people in North High Line that created the UAC. That was an effort through a small group of King County councilmen trying to find a way for unincorporated areas to have a greater say in their own communities. It was seized upon in North High Line, and a large committee, which started out, the first meeting had over 200 people at it, the actual drafting committee had over 30 people involved. I was the primary drafter on the bylaws for it. It was the first UAC created in the county, and its bylaws became the model that when other organizations went to the county about creating a UAC, that's the example that they received for what they should put in their bylaws. Now, the county has recently decided to abandon that, go back to the old top-down approach and break neighborhoods apart so that they don't have to listen to the people in the neighborhoods. That's not the reason for turning away from North High Line. With respect to some of the things that have been brought, the High Line School District, yes, the High Line School District would continue to serve that area even if Seattle annexed it, which is a great deal for Seattle because it can pursue land use patterns in that area with no need to worry about the impact those have on the school district. The impact would fall on all the rest of us taxpayers in the High Line School District. There's no assurance the utility districts would remain independent. What the city of Seattle has said over and over is that they would consider it. History does not support that. They have never done that in any other area where they've done an annexation. Prime example is Yarborough Heights area, which is still served by Southwest Suburban Sewer District, which provides wholesale service. The city of Seattle owns the utility and charges the customers there the same rate it charges the rest of its customers in the city, which is over three times what Southwest Suburban Sewer District charges, even though Southwest Suburban is basing its rates on the same rates that it charges customers that it serves directly. Fire districts, I have it on good authority from people in the fire districts that those issues are in fact on the way to resolution and will in fact be resolved. This $77 million deficit I keep hearing about just doesn't exist. It's a wish list of projects that we would do. It's not significantly different from the $166 million projection that we have in the draft transportation master plan that we'll be discussing at a future meeting. Sales tax credit is in fact secure at this point, and I've seen no reason for it to go I haven't heard of any reduction in our police services. Has there been? Frankly, I think that the annexation is the right thing for the people of Burian, it's the right thing for the city of Burian, it's the right thing for the people of North High Line, and it would be irresponsible for us as a city council to not give the people of North High Line a chance to vote on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Robison.
Thank you. As I've mentioned throughout this process, I have grave financial concerns. I don't believe that long-term in this financial economic time that annexation would be economically viable. The fire districts, we still need to see agreements, especially regarding retirement, which is a huge financial impact, the emergency response that goes to the area, and services to the Slither by the River and the Delta Marina. The sales tax credit might be secure in 2012, but it is not guaranteed, as we've seen during this legislative session. I'd like to see some realistic infrastructure numbers if the $77 million is not correct, then what is? And then lastly, I did have the opportunity to attend both Boundary Review Board meetings recently, and several Boundary Review Board members had concerns over the financial figures that they were given, and they didn't make their decision on the limited information. I believe it was incomplete information, and I will be on no vote tonight. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Captain-Mayor. I want to say first of all that North High Line is a wonderful area, and I hope that someday, someday that it be part of Burian. Right now, it's not that time. You know, we have serious shortcomings associated with the annexation, and what we're doing right now basically is signing a contract without negotiating the terms first. I think that's a dangerous position to be in. If we go forward with this, we're going to have no leverage. And I don't think it's a coincidence that right after we did our vote for moving forward with going to the Boundary Review Board, that the King County library system proposed closing the White Center and Boulevard Park libraries, and that suddenly the legislature decided to withdraw the, decided, excuse me, the governor proposed to withdraw the sales tax credit. Like you said, it's more than a coincidence. You know, there's been a lot of talk about Seattle will annex in the area. Well, quite frankly, I feel that's a red herring. I don't think there's the political will or the desire to have Seattle annex that area, and I certainly have enough faith in the residents of the North High Line area not to vote for that. And as I move forward, I have to first of all recognize my responsibility as an elected official who is elected to represent the citizens of the present area. And I also have to recognize that if we move forward, that I will assume a moral obligation to the citizens of North High Line to be able to provide services. And quite frankly, given the numbers that I have seen, the fact that we have it, we have no guarantee as far as the sales tax credit or other issues, I cannot maintain my responsibility to the citizens of Burian, and I cannot stand up and say morally that I'm moving forward in the best interests of those citizens of North High Line. As I've said, we have no guarantee of the sales tax credit. And without that, I don't feel I can meet my responsibility to Burian citizens or meet my moral obligations to the citizens of North High Line. The fire district has talked about how they will incur a $1 million year deficit. They'll have difficulties maintaining service at their present level with that deficit in place. As I've said, I have a responsibility to the present citizens of Burian, and a moral responsibility if we move forward with the annexation of North High Line, I mean, if we want to know. There's been a much talk about the $77 million capital backlog in the North High Line area. To put that in perspective, in Burian itself, the present boundaries of Burian, that backlog is $56 million according to our last transportation plan update. And that's an area three times the size of the proposed area that we're going to look at in annexing. So figure that out per capita. That's a huge burden that we would be incurring with no assurance from King County, who presently is operating at a $7 million year deficit. They ask to make out for some of this neglect that they've incurred up there to follow through. Again, it doesn't allow me to meet my responsibility to the present citizens of Burian or my moral obligations to the citizens of North High Line. I'm going to vote no on this. As I've said, North High Line is a wonderful area. I want someday to be part of the citizens of the city of Burian. But until such time, as I will be assured that I will be able to continue to deliver services to the city, to the present residents of Burian, and also to be able to deliver services to the people of North High Line, I will vote no and will continue to vote no. Thank you.
And lastly, I have some comments. First, rather than go over everything that's been said before, I just want to associate myself with the comments made by Councilmember McGilton and Councilmember Robinson. I have been, I was on the Regional Planning Commission, I have been on council for a long time, I have taken a lot of votes, and I know that with each one of those, there has been folks who were concerned, basically, I think about change, not wanting to change. And there's been gloom and doom scenarios put out there about what would happen. For instance, when we rebuilt Fourth Avenue Southwest, there was a lot of concern about that. It was the first road that Burian actually rebuilt. There was a note contingent that said, "Don't do that." Today, it's a beautiful street that people like to use. Town Square Land Assembly and the resulting agreement was very controversial, with a large group of people again opposing. I opposed the purchase of Meal Makers. I didn't see that that was necessary, but the rest of the land assembly, I totally supported. And we have received so many awards, so many positive comments, a very positive press. I'm very proud of that. The City Hall Library Complex here was not brought to the people without controversy. In the years since we have been a city, we have improved Seahurst Park. There was controversy over that. There used to be people that would not let their children go in there because it was unsafe. Eagle Mandin Park, when it was first proposed by citizens, were very angry with what the city was proposing to do with the land that was bought with city taxpayer dollars. It was very controversial. I've gotten very many phone calls on that one, all negative. Jacob Ambon Park, Matheson Park, each one required a separate vote of council, but each one was a controversy that has turned out over time to be a very positive action for the city. This is just a short summary of the times that we have had controversial issues to deal with, that we have moved forward in a positive fashion, and it has benefited the city. And I would like to bring back to people's minds the comments by Councilmember Patterson. During all of these times when we have had these hard issues, we have remained a fiscally responsible city. We have not laid off massive amounts of people, we have not raised taxes, we have not, we have not cut our funding to human services, and all of the things that we have funded over time, we still continue to fund. That's because with our staff, we have had very good fiscal management of the city. So each time we had one of these votes, each time we had to move forward in some fashion, my criteria was what was good for the city of Burian. And sometimes those votes were uncomfortable because you don't feel real happy standing up here with people standing at the microphone telling you that what you're about to do is pretty dumb. So that happened with the first annexation. That annexation has proved to be a good thing for the city of Burian, so I'm very happy to support this current annexation because I truly believe that it is for the best of the future of Burian. I have to live with myself with every decision I make. I can't do that if I let these seniors make the decision for me because they are so adamant in their view and would hold the city back. I'd like to see Burian move forward, and with this annexation, I totally agree, we will move forward. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Edgar.
At this point in time, I do not believe that the annexation of the North High Line area is an economically sound idea. I think as a representative of the Burian citizens, that I'm obligated to also take a look at what needs we have to have met, whether it is managing our stormwater problems, having our capital improvement areas. I think we have more than enough to keep us busy, and the funds that we are short of, we need to keep in our area. I think that we cannot necessarily depend on the state income real estate or the state sales tax rebate as a sure thing. It may last for one year, it may last for two years, but we know from projections for the Burke study that at the end of this 10 years, we're still going to be in the hole. So I will be on no vote.
And Councilmember Robinson.
I'd just like to respond to a couple of things that have been said here by my fellow council members. The capital plan is a red herring, those capital needs. If you go back to the study, what you see is a range, $77 million keeps getting thrown out, and that's the high end of the range around like $40, or like $40 million. If you look at our current transportation master plan, which covers only transportation, doesn't cover any of the other capital needs that are covered in that other figure, we have $56 to $75 million, and just for current projects, before you include projects of a more regional nature, like First Avenue South, bringing several roads up to design standards, et cetera, which bring a total of $156 to $166 million. Complaining that this isn't a situation where there's crumbling roads and bridges up there that need to be replaced immediately. This is a question that there's a wish list, very similar and very much in proportion to what we have for the rest of the city of Burian. It would be nice to do. And if anybody had, if you took the time to drive around and check out Burian streets and take a look at the current infrastructure in Burian, and then drive around North High Line and give it a similar examination, you would not find a difference. and make, give it a similar examination, you would not find a difference. The, and as far as the library, actually, the decision to close down the libraries had started long before our vote on moving forward to the Boundary Review Board, and one of the excuses used by the King County library system was that that area might annex to Seattle, and those current libraries were too close to the Seattle boundary, and they would lose a bunch of their service area. Putting this to a vote, moving forward with annexation eliminates that, that excuse for closing down those libraries. I've been studying this for a long time, like I said before, and I am 100% convinced that it's the financially responsible thing to do, it's the best thing for the city of Burian, it actually will benefit Burian more than it benefits people in North Highline. Thank you.